Good morning, welcome to the Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. It is Wednesday, April 8th, 2015. We're in the Senator hearing room here at Courthouse Square. And we'll begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we're starting out our morning with a CAO teamwork award. And John Latimer, your name is next to this, so would you tell us about this award?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, as you know, when I first came here, to me, teamwork is so important to make sure that county services are provided in the best way we can and provide the customer service that all of our constituents expect. So we do this periodically when we have groups of employees from several different departments, in this case, two, three departments, including those that run the county fair. County fairs, you know, is very important for Marion County because Marion County is an agricultural county and it's an agricultural fair. So in preparing for that, we use the state fairgrounds. And in order to reduce the costs, we have a lot of people that do work at the fairgrounds to reduce our rent that the state fair likes to charge us. So what I'd like to do is introduce this year's CAO award. I'd like to have the folks from Public Works come up and somebody representing the Sheriff's Office.
I'm the sheriff.
How about the sheriff?
There we go.
No, we don't want him.
You need somebody real.
Well, we have the entire Public Works Department with us today.
We only have small works.
The Sheriff's Office, the Sheriff's Office provided help with a whole variety
of things in making sure that the fairgrounds were presentable for the, for the fair and in helping offset costs that the state fair would otherwise have charged us. And Public Works folks put together a project for us that actually paved part of the parking lot at the fairgrounds that that also offset costs. So I'm going to ask, why don't, do you know who your folks work with?
Yeah, so our work crews helped out at the fairgrounds. We had crew leaders out there. Matthew Patton was one of the crew leaders, and I'm trying to think of the other names. We had two or three crews out there. So they, our crew leaders helped lead these crews and worked side by side with the offenders. John McComber was the other one. So we appreciate their, their work and their help and be able to give back to the fair.
Thank you, Sheriff. Appreciate it. And Don Newell, who is the director, the manager of our, all the road crews and all the work they do out there, I'll let him say a word.
Well, great. We had a part of this job where we did a training exercise and we had multiple partners. I'm going to let Pat explain the partnership a little bit, but we had some donated asphalt and our crews teamed up with, actually, we brought the city of Salem in with their new paving machine. And so we did some repairs that were in the, that were needed in the parking lot. And Pat's got a few words. He's also going to introduce the folks to you here.
Okay. We did, coordinating was with Joel Connor, Pete DeLapp and myself. Joel Connor was a past employee of Marion County and now is on the fair board. And Joel was a big part of it. He was coordinating our donations and he also was liaison between the state and the county and the county fairgrounds. We started out with grinding the edges, so you had good transitions with our inlay machine. And then we worked with the city of Salem and their new paver and we had 20-plus employees where we went through and paved it. And then our crack seal crew was Kim and Chuck. They came in and sealed the edges. Dave Vopel was our, our crew leader. He was the guy on the ground that made everything happen. And then we got Matt and Joe that were there for the entire project from start to finish and was a big part of our labor force. And I want to thank you for the recognition and that's about it. Thank you.
Great. And we like to, our crews like to have a gift for each one of you folks here. Go ahead, folks. We're taking pictures. We like to have pictures with these.
These are the crack and seal guys.
If it's possible, possible, we like to have pictures with you guys standing behind us with your hats on there if possible. You folks are now dressed to flag for us at any time.
You might have to stand on a chair.
Step aside, Ray.
There we go. Alright. I think we can get everyone ready. Is everybody ready? One, two, three. One more.
Thanks for helping out. Appreciate it. Good job, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks for the hat. Hey, I can use this one. I'm duck hunting.
So I want to make a couple of comments as they're sitting down. First of all, Tammy Getch is our community services director and she went to the department head elected officials meeting and she said, "We're having this county fair and we want more than just people coming to the fair or maybe thinking about setting up a booth at the fair. We want really like real connections with the, with the other departments." And so we set up a meeting and Alan Haley was there and I think Sheriff Myers, you were there, right? And, and a few other people from other departments. And we had business services there because we were real concerned about risk management. And we were concerned about all the rules about volunteering and all the rules, you know, and they had some projects on the list that were like asbestos removal and we were like, eh, we don't think we're really going to do that. But then Alan and Jason said, "These are some things that we could do." And they, and the departments jumped right in and did it. And because of that, we had been slightly in the hole on the fair the year before and we were really watching the dollars and we had just said, "We can't have any entertainment at the fair this year that we pay for." And so because there was $40,000 of value that came out of this, we were able to provide entertainment at the fair and it increased our attendance. And I think it was a record attendance for last year. And that wouldn't have happened without all of you being there. So it really is, I mean, it's, it's bigger than all of us when, you can see when we work together. It's just something that is so special and so important. And so thank you so much for what you did. And we're hoping, we had a fair board meeting a week ago, and we're hoping that we could do something similar this year. And maybe instead of paving a quarter of the parking lot, we could pave the rest of it and they would give us future credit so we wouldn't have to do it a little bit every year. So that's something Tammy, I know, is working on. There's this thing called the Oregon State Fair Council, Commissioner, that, that you're on. That we need to make sure that the, that the new director is kind of on board with all of this. So I know you'll take that message back to him.
He's, he's had the message. It's just he's a little overwhelmed right now. I don't know if he had any new news from Mike on this project?
On the 26th.
Your meeting.
After your meeting.
Okay, great.
All right. So we'll have to take this story to him so he knows how great it is.
We'll know how effective he is here.
Or maybe both of us go. We just hammer it in there. So it's wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you for being here. John, you look great in that hat, huh? I ought to wear that all the time.
They might hook me to work. You know, I just sit all day. I think it's important for everyone to understand how we, we don't.
We don't get things done in the county without our employees and, and we have the best. And these folks from Public Works and the Sheriff's Office did such a great job working with Tammy and her staff of the fairgrounds, at the fairgrounds. And I really appreciate it. It, it shows that we can work together as departments and we aren't in silos. So thank you all so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other comments before we move on? Nope. All right. So let's go to public comment. And Joe Fabry is the first person that signed up. Joe, do you, can you hear me back there? You going to come out and say something to the board here?
Thank you. Thanks for the hush.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Joe has been a volunteer with CCTV for how many years? Right, so it's been 14 years?
And he knows to pull the microphone up.
Right, yeah, you know exactly how to do that.
Well, let's, let's put it this way. It's been a pleasure working with Marion County and volunteering with CCTV and everything. The reason why I wanted to speak to you this morning, I was going to speak to you about physically challenged people. Our city, in our county, have a lot of people who are physically challenged and I am one of those. Unfortunately, I have to say, I'm one of those. And my thing is, is that I want to see better, better things for physically, physically challenged folks, you know, people who, who have wheelchairs and stuff. I know there are curbs that they can get up and down the, but you know, there are a lot of other things that need to get done, you know, more respect for people. Because there are sometimes, I've seen people, you know, a guy in a wheelchair be rolling along and he'd be going down the curb and a car would go zipping by and almost cut him off a couple of times. And it's a little, a little unnerving, if you'll pardon the expression. So what I would like to know is why we can't get some ordinance or something that would protect physically challenged people. I mean, you know, we may be, I'm 60 years old, by the way. I had a birthday last October, so I turned 60, so I'm a senior citizen now. And I'm kind of slower than I used to be. So what I was kind of hoping was that there was a way to make an ordinance for physically challenged people, you know, to have a little more respect in the county and in the city itself. And that's one of the things that I have been, you know, I haven't gone to the Capitol yet, but I'm going to be going to the Capitol. I'm going to be speaking to a few senators, I think. And I want to make the point that physically challenged people do deserve the same respect as normal folks. I mean, we really do because of the fact that we, you know, we pay our taxes, we do, you know, we pay, we do things for the community and we want the respect that everybody else gets. And that's my, that's my little soapbox. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, you know, I think we could do a proclamation around physically challenged people. I think that would be a real easy thing for us to do. Unfortunately, I mean, there are a lot of laws already. The Americans with Disabilities Act is the overarching one that require all of the things that you're talking about. It's just a matter of whether it's enforced and whether people understand it. And I know that when I broke my ankle and was in a wheelchair for a very short time, and you probably remember that, and I didn't have a motorized wheelchair, I had one that I was pushing with the wheels on it. And it took a lot of momentum just to get down a street that looks like it's really flat, but you start learning, there's a little bit of incline and it's real tough. And I have a great deal of respect for people that, that have to, to endure that all of the time and be able to figure out how to navigate that. So I think it's an important issue that you bring up.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Let's see, Ted Schuster, you're signed up.
If this is about officiating the Wisconsin game, I don't want to hear it.
Good morning.
I'm going to be under remonstrances, Commissioner.
My name is Ted Schuster and I work for the Marion County Community Services Department. And the intent of this public comment is to inform the public that Marion County is soliciting applications through the end of this month to be a grant recipient through the Oregon Office of Community Dispute Resolution through the Oregon University School of Law. And grant funds for Marion County will be approximately $84,000 for the period of July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2017. And the goal of this program is to be efficient and cost-effective to residents and to add value to Marion County and the state through building grassroots conflict resolution capacity. And this application is available to any firm in Marion County that offers dispute resolution services. And the request for application was publicly noticed on March 31st and made available to all applicants on April 1st. And for more information on this, please visit the department website at co.marian.or.us/cs for Community Services or contact the office at 503-373-4481. And this concludes my comment this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. So besides publicly noticing it, have you sent it by email to eligible firms so that they know that it's out there?
We have not.
That might, that's a good thing to do. I think as long as, and Cam, looking at Camber, as long as you use just a list where you look up and send it to everybody, so for under dispute resolution, then you'll get the word out more than just, I mean, the public notice is a formality. We have to do it legally. I don't know how many people read the public notices. I do, but I don't know if everybody else does. And, you know, the people have to know to go to a website, so some outreach probably would be useful.
Yes.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
So anyone else want to speak in public comment that didn't get a chance to sign up? Looks like not, so we'll move to our consent calendar. Is it Commissioner Cameron's turn to move our consent calendar today?
Madam Chair, I'll move the consent calendar. First item, under Board of Commissioners, OLCC application recommending approval for the Brooks Tap Room in Brooks. Under the Health Department, approve Amendment Number Six to add $78,792 to the agreement with Seeds of Faith Ministries Adult Foster Home. And under the Sheriff's Department, approve Amendment Number Six to the Correct RX Prescription Contract to add an additional $160,000 to cover prescription expenses for inmates through June 30th, 2015.
Second it.
So we have a motion and a second to approve these items. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. They are approved. So now we have four action items this morning, I think it's four, and no public hearings. So we will move first to Board of Commissioners. And this one is to consider approval of the Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council Revised Bylaws. And it has my name next to it. I've had the privilege of chairing the Public Safety Coordinating Council since last, late last summer. And it's a great group of people and we have, we immediately jumped into an assignment which was given to us by the state, which is the House Bill 3194, Justice Reinvestment Plan. But in the process of assuming this role as chair and kind of learning what was going on, the bylaws had not been revised, I think, since 2011. And, yeah, it was January 2011. And when we started looking at the membership and if you, in your notebook, if you go to the very last page in the, and under tab number one, you'll see the list of, of members. And it came to our attention, well, first of all, the person that is with the, where is it? Oregon Military Department retired, so we're still waiting on, to find out whether or not they're going to find a replacement. But then we have two other items that are marked vacant. So number 11 is a city manager or other city representative, and that person was Pete McCollum. But as you know, Pete retired also this year from the Woodburn City Council, so technically he doesn't represent a city anymore, but he wanted to continue serving, so we moved him down to line 26, which says additional member at large. And then as we were having that conversation, Mark Callier, who is from Kaiser and working on the big toy, I had to throw that in there.
What is it? What's the big toy?
The Kaiser big toy, the, the.
What is that?
It's a playground that they're building on Kaiser. It's wonderful. But anyway, he was representing the local alcohol and drug planning committee and initially, when he was appointed, and he said, "You know, I haven't been on that planning committee for several years." So technically, he's not representing the LEDPC anymore, so we moved, but he still wants to serve, so we moved him down there. And there was a cap on the number of members that was less than 27. So you can see, when we fill these other vacancies, we were going to run into a problem of either having to ask some people to resign or revise the bylaws. So it gave us an excuse to take a look at the bylaws. There are two, there's right before the membership roster cover page, there's a page that I wrote up for the, the Public Safety Council when they looked at these to talk about what the changes were. So most of them, you can see, are technical changes. We designated the council as council and the Board of Commissioners as board. We removed some language about the Children and Families Commission Plan because the statutes have changed and so that's no longer a state requirement and they no longer do that plan. We changed Rod Calkins' title to Health Administrator. I think he was called a Health Director and, I mean, so there were just little things like that. The substantive change on pages two and three of the bylaws are related to the membership slots. So instead of having a maximum of 25 members, we now have a maximum of 27 members to match the roster that you just saw. And then changed the language around a little bit to be more straightforward. There were several other technical changes on pages, on page five and six. Some of it was numbering, one word change. On page four, Section 6D, there was a substantive change. Let's see. No, I'm not seeing that. 6B, I'm sorry, that's why it isn't. Where's majority? Okay, so now it's 6F. All right, here it is. The majority is defined as a majority of the appointed voting members, council membership. So it said it's defined as a majority of the quorum. And the problem with that is that sometimes you have vacancies in the, in the membership and just want to be really clear that you're not held accountable for the vacancies when you're counting for a quorum. And there are times when we are calling Walt and Tammy and saying, "Are you coming?" in order to get the quorum so that we can get started. More technical changes in Section Six, changing it from the department's website to Marion County's website, taking out some prepositional phrases. Substantive change on page six, Section 7B, two new responsibilities for the steering committee. And Bruce worked with us on this language. Let's see. The steering committee has been meeting monthly, two weeks before the council meeting. And their responsibilities were to, in the prior bylaws, were to develop the meeting agendas, assure matters are ready for council meetings, ensure assignments are complete and prepared, make recommendations for the formation of task teams, recommend individuals to serve on task teams, and coordinate the teams created by the council. Well, there aren't any task teams currently, at least there weren't when I took over and we haven't created any. And we do talk about the agenda, but there have been situations, and one came up in particular, where there was a report that was due to the Criminal Justice Commission and it came out days after our full council meeting and it was due prior to the next council meeting. And so we ended up with a situation where we needed somebody to say it was okay, besides Hitesh and me and Jeff Wood, who wrote it up. And so we sent out to the steering committee and said, you know, is this okay? But technically, under the Oregon Public Meetings Law, you're not supposed to email out and get people to agree on things. So it felt really awkward. And so we didn't say we were voting, so we didn't violate the public meetings law. And then when the, the full council met, we had them ratify it after the fact. But there wasn't any mechanism in place that would have allowed us to actually approve it by a body. And so this is where we thought that the steering committee, which did meet during that timeframe when, when we had to have it done, could have been that body. And I'm on other boards where the executive committee often plays that role, where they can take action in between committee meetings. So we made it very narrow. It's number seven and in 7B. So it's taking action on time-sensitive administrative matters that require a decision between council meetings with notice to be provided to all council members prior to taking action and with the action or actions to be ratified at the next full council meeting. Action will not be taken under the subsection if any council member notifies the steering committee of the council member's objection prior to the steering committee's action on a time-sensitive matter. And then it defines time-sensitive matters as mandatory municipal, state, or federal reporting, letters of support associated with grant applications. So that gives us some more latitude as an executive or steering committee to be able to act when those types of situations occur. And then we added also number six, which would be acting on matters when authority has been delegated by the full council to do so. So there wasn't a provision that allowed the council to delegate authority to the steering committee to take on a task. So those are really the main substantive changes in the bylaws, other than the myriad of technical language changes that you see there. So with that, I would open it up to questions and a motion to approve the revised bylaws. And I would note that the Public Safety Council did review these and they did recommend them to the board at their meeting on March 10th.
This is so minor, but I'm just a little confused. I'm looking at the membership, the roster and there's a spot for the sheriff and Jason Myers fills it. Then there's also community corrections. And then Jason shows up again and it says for Jeff Wood. So why not just have Jeff Wood there?
Well, you know, that's an interesting question. They've never had Jeff Wood on the council and Jason has fulfilled both roles as the sheriff and the community corrections director. So we didn't change that in this round of the bylaws, although we're meeting jointly with the Marion County Reentry Council now. And Jeff Wood is the chair of the reentry council. And he's been presenting probably, what, three out of the last five meetings because we're doing the Justice Reinvestment Plan. So I don't know what the reason was initially for that. And we didn't end up adding any positions other than moving the folks down that were at large. So we can take that on in the future if we want to appoint him. There's a slot for him there. So, anyway.
Doesn't need to be addressed, as long as.
Right, yeah. And it's, that's a mystery to me, too. I don't know. Because the original purpose of a Public Safety Coordinating Council is to, or is it, just right here in the front, to develop and recommend to the Board of Commissioners state resources to serve the local offender population as one, and then state and local resources to serve the needs of the juvenile population. So that's the primary purpose in statute of Public Safety Council. And they were created along when the community corrections plans began and that moved from the state level to the county level. So community corrections is a really preeminent part of the mission of this group.
So, ma'am. Ma'am Chair, just to clarify, we've got the reentry council listed here, but they're a separate group.
They are a separate group.
Right, so they're not voting members of the Public Safety Coordinating Council, they're just voting members of their own group.
They're voting members of their own group and we're holding it jointly. And we're not, I mean, we're, we're taking quorum on each group and we're not necessarily being picky about who votes when because you know how that goes, so.
But just to clarify on this document, it's two separate groups.
Correct.
All right, Madam Chair, make a motion that we do approve the Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council Revised Bylaws.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the bylaws. Any further discussion? Those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Thank you. Under Business Services, consider approval of a proclamation designating April 12th through 18th, 2015 as Volunteer Week in Marion County. And Kathy Crocker is here. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I need to take a page from the Public Works and bring you gifts next week.
Yes.
That seemed to work.
Gifts of nominal value. They're under $50, right?
I'll move that we put this hearing on hold till next week.
So I am Kathy Crocker. I'm the Volunteer Services Coordinator for Marion County. I often say I have the best job in the county. I get to work with amazing volunteers and staff. And I'm just so appreciative of the support of both the Board of Commissioners, Business Services, our new Business Services Director, Colleen Kuntz-Tapman, is here today in support. So I appreciate that. Next week, I do look forward to bringing you the 2014 Annual Volunteer Report and share some stories and photos, introduce you to some outstanding volunteers who have been nominated and will be recognized next week. volunteers who have been nominated and will be recognized next week. Volunteers are truly making an impact. And so I appreciate the opportunity to share those success stories with you. What we're here about today is proclaiming Volunteer Week in Marion County. National Volunteer Week is a time to celebrate people who do extraordinary things through service. It was established in 1974, and it focuses national attention on the impact and power of volunteerism and service as an integral aspect of our civic leadership. This week draws the support and endorsement of the President and Congress, governors, mayors, and municipal leaders, as well as corporate and community groups across the country. Next week arriving in the mail, you have, have sent out a thank you letter to all of our 1,632 active volunteers currently. And this will be arriving probably about Saturday or Monday in time for National Volunteer Week. And with that, I'd like to thank Roth's Fresh Market, who has contributed a coupon for a free doughnut to each of our volunteers. And it says, and no, this is cheesy, and yes, I made it up, "You might not make any dough volunteering with us, but we're nuts about you." Okay. So we want to celebrate in this week all volunteers. We obviously appreciate the volunteers that are working with Marion County. But there are so many volunteers in our communities that are working with their passion for other organizations in the community. So we'd like to recognize them as well. So here in Marion County, I'm asking you to consider the proclamation declared the week of April 12th through 18th as Volunteer Week in Marion County. And I have a PowerPoint that will follow along with the proclamation as you read it.
Oh, okay, cool. Well, let's have a motion first and a second to approve the proclamation and any comments that we'd want to make. And then we can go ahead and read it. So.
So Madam Chair, is it me?
Yeah.
Pardon me.
Is it my turn?
Well, you, no, it's not actually. Do you want to, do you want to do it, Commissioner?
Fine. I'll make a motion that we approve a proclamation designating April 12th, 18th, 2015 as Volunteer Week in Marion County. I'll just make them all from now on. It's fine.
Okay, you just made the last one, but I volunteered to give up.
No, you, you did, you actually did make the last one.
Coordinating Council?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought I did the consent calendar. We're volunteering to give up our.
It's okay.
I'll second, I'll second the motion made by my favorite.
Oh, really?
Third Chair Commissioner.
All right. So we have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation designating April 12th through 18th as Volunteer Week in Marion County.
I'll second it if I didn't.
Okay. Any further discussion? So we're looking forward to next week. And it will be wonderful. You'll have all of the volunteers here, right? So we'll have a room full of people and it will be great. And we'll have the volunteer report. And this year, for the first time, we will have the Marion County Reentry Initiative in there because you have made such an effort to get that. And I know Tammy and Jan Calvin and Hitesh and everyone have been really working hard to get those volunteer hours in there. So that's great.
Yes.
So those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 So now we will read it. And Commissioner Cameron, would you begin in reading it?
Sure. Okay. "In the matter of proclaiming April 12th through the 18th, 2015 to be Volunteer Week in Marion County, this matter came before the Marion County Board of Commissioners at its regularly scheduled public meeting on April 8th, 2015, whereas the entire community can inspire, equip, mobilize people to take actions that change the county. And whereas during this week, all over the nation, service projects will be performed and volunteers recognized for their commitment to service." And?
"Whereas volunteers in Marion County have undertaken responsibilities that promote the general welfare of the county, and whereas in providing these services, volunteers have demonstrated a spirit of personal concern and wholehearted willingness to help others. And whereas individuals and communities are at the center of social change, discovering their power to make a difference. And whereas experience teaches us that government by itself cannot solve all of our social problems." And?
"Whereas our county's volunteer force of citizens is a great treasure. And whereas these volunteers ask nothing more than the satisfaction of a job well done. And whereas these individuals are most deserving of our appreciation and thanks. Now therefore, we, the Marion County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim April 12th through 18th, 2015 as Volunteer Week in Marion County, and urge our fellow citizens to volunteer in their respective communities. And it's assigned, it is signed this 8th day of April, 2015." So thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to make a plug that if anybody out there that is watching and has a passion or an interest in volunteering with Marion County, my contact information is on the screen. You can go and visit my website as well.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for the great job that you do with volunteers. Next item, Contract Review Board, consider waiver of minor informalities on response to request for proposal for Oracle reporting and data analysis. And we have Camber Schlag. Good morning, Camber. It's a good thing you were here earlier because then I could look at you and you went, yes. So I know that I'm on the right track. I like that.
Good morning, Commissioners and members of the Board. Okay, so I am here requesting a discretionary action to be approved. On February 27th, 2015, the Marion County Finance Department issued a request for a proposal for Oracle reporting and data analysis solution. Proposals were due by 4:00 PM on March 27th, 2015. Four proposals were received in response to the RFP. In preliminary review by the contracts compliance analyst, it was discovered that one of the proposals received had a minor informality, which consisted of a failure to provide an original copy of their proposal, and the transmittal letter was not signed. Section 4A of the RFP indicates that all proposals must include a transmittal letter addressed to the contact person on the cover page of the RFP and signed by a duly constituted, officially legally authorized, to bind the proposer to both its proposal and cost. The firm was notified of the minor informality and was asked to review and submit an original marked proposal with signatures. By allowing the firm to submit an original copy of their proposal, complete with original signatures, this allows the county to consider Polaris Associates Incorporated as the responsive proposal, proposer in response to the referenced RFP. It is a matter of form over substance as a minor error that can be waived without prejudice to other proposals. The county discovers certain mistakes in an offer. After the opening, the county may take action on the mistakes. Pursuant to Marion County Public Contract Rules, Sections 20-0470, the county may waive or permit a proposer to correct a minor informality. A minor informality is a matter of form rather than substance that is evident on the face of the offer, or an insignificant mistake that can be waived or corrected without prejudice to other offers."
Thank you. So I've got a couple of questions. Question one was on the cover letter, did they have the person's, like, his name typed in the signature block? So it was a duly constituted person, but just didn't have the actual handwritten signature in the signature block? Is that the?
Correct. Yes, that's correct.
So it wasn't like there was no signature at all? It just wasn't a handwritten signature?
Correct.
Right. Okay. And then the second question is, did they provide then eight photocopies? Or did they provide seven copies and didn't provide the original?
Correct. So they did provide the recommended number of copies, but they had eight total. But none of them had, none of them were marked original and none of them had an original signature. And the cover letter had no signature at all. So we requested just one copy to be marked original with original signatures.
Okay. So it wasn't that they didn't provide the required number of copies. It's just that one of the eight copies was not the original as required in the?
Correct.
Okay. That's what I thought. I just wanted to clarify. So any questions, other questions for Camber? Thoughts about this?
Okay, if it's thoughts, thank you. Well, I don't have any problem with this in particular, but it seems like a signature is the most binding part of the whole document. And if that isn't on it, then it could be anything. If, you know, have a letter with my name on it. But until I put that signature on it, I'm not claiming it. So again, I'm not a problem, but that seems something that ought to be caught.
Any other thoughts, Commissioner? No? I'm thinking that this is an IT contract and that they're all IT people. And so they, electronic signatures and copies are just what they do. That's what's my read on it. So, but perhaps they will be more careful in the future when they are applying for government contracts.
So who would you like to make a motion now that we've got?
Oh, I've got Kevin's initial next to this one.
You know, Commissioner, you won't have to worry about it because I won't be here next week. So you get to make them all. So I'll make up for it now.
All right. Would you like to make this motion?
Yeah, I'll move that we consider a waiver of minor informalities on response to a request for proposal for Oracle reporting and data analysis.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this waiver of minor informalities as presented. Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
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 It's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last item, Health Department, consider approval of an order setting the maximum civil penalty amount for violation of smoke-free and tobacco-free county property ordinance. And we have Emily DeHare, is that how you say your last name? And Bruce Armstrong.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. For the record, Bruce Armstrong, Assistant Legal Counsel with Marion County. On January 14th, you approved an ordinance establishing a countywide ban on the use of tobacco products. It's, and it was called the Smoke-Free and Tobacco-Free County Property Ordinance. That process, it wasn't done by an emergency procedure, so the ordinance actually takes effect 90 days from January 14th, which is April 14th coming up. As part of the ordinance, it provided that the Board shall set the max, the amount of the civil penalty for violations of the ordinance by separate order. And so we're before you today to present an order for your consideration. And what is sought is that a maximum civil penalty amount be set at $250. Currently, under the code that's in, in place right now, the maximum civil penalty is $100. And that was established in 2000. We took a look at what, what other laws apply. And under the Oregon Indoor Clean Air Act, the, there are two levels of penalties. The one maximum is $500, or also there's a $250 maximum civil penalty amount. So we consider that. And also, normally in our, in any ordinance that involves violation proceedings or civil penalties, we frequently connect the violation, the civil penalty amounts to Oregon statute, which lays out what violations are. And those can be Class A, B, C, or D violations, like a traffic ticket. And the lowest of those is Class D. And that's, the maximum amount, amount of a Class D violation is $250. So after discussing it, the, the thinking was, and the recommendation to the Board is to set, again, the maximum for a violation at $250. And as we've talked about before, the, the purpose of the ordinance isn't, there's, isn't to pursue enforcement. The purpose of the ordinance isn't to impose penalties against individuals. The purpose is compliance with the Smoke-Free and Tobacco-Free, Tobacco-Free ordinance. And it, it's only in those extreme circumstances that it's anticipated that there would be any pursuit of any enforcement proceeding. It would be the focus, and I think Emily can speak to this, about the, the focus is on education, helping folks transition away from using tobacco products. The focus is not on enforcement, but the, there needs, there needs to be an amount established as what the possible civil penalty could be. So we're before you today with that, that proposal. And that's what is, an order has been, has been written up that sets that at $250. Again, a maximum. But I think Emily wanted us to go and talk a little bit about where we're at on the tobacco-free process.
Great, thank you. For the record, my name is Emily DeHare, and I'm the Chronic Disease Prevention Coordinator at the Health Department in Woodburn. Currently, we are in the process of developing signs that will be located at each of the properties in Marion County. About a month ago, we sent out temporary signage to all locations for the general public, as well as staff, to announce that the ordinance has been adopted and will be coming on July 1. We had several discussions with administrators and support staff about where the posters should be located, what the intent really is, the fact that future permanent signage is coming. That prompted several discussions about cessation and benefits that we have available to, or regular staff within the county, what our Marion County benefits cover. We also sent a memo out to department heads. Mr. Latimer sent that out about a month ago, a little more than a month ago, just announcing, announcing the ordinance and what the, what the ordinance entails, so that they will be able to pass that information along to their depart, or to their managers and staff. We will also be sending out shortly a memo to all staff, just, just general staff, letting them know that this is coming with a little bit of information about the rollout, considering that we have the one-year extension for Public Works, the jail, and juvenile departments. We'll also be including information about what services they can access if they're interested in tobacco cessation efforts. There will be information about some, to clarify, electronic smoking devices, since there was a little bit of initial confusion about that. I think we, we did a great job of addressing that electronic smoking devices will be included, since they're not FDA-approved cessation devices at this point. So that will be coming out shortly. We'll, we'll be working with Public Works to develop the signs that will be distributed. And we've put it out there that myself and Diana Dickey, the health educators in the Tobacco Prevention Program, are available to come and discuss these, the ordinance at all staffs, if that's something that departments have found to be helpful. We conducted a presentation at both Health Department, all staffs, to let them know that this is coming, to talk about cessation efforts, and to ask for staff's assistance and compliance, because we know that ordinances such as these take a few months to really settle in and allow for people to know about the new changes. So that's where we're at currently, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Madam Chair, can I add one, one other thing that connects with what Emily was speaking about? With the ordinance, she mentioned that Sheriff saw, the jail, juvenile, and Public Works has an extension. And that is that there are designated smoking areas are allowed to continue on all county properties if they're established until this June 30th, 2015. But after that point, the way the ordinance is written right now, only designated smoking areas will be allowed for the ensuing year, for the ensuing county year, from June, July 1, 2015 to June 30, 2016, at the jail, juvenile department, and Public Works Department. The, we've had discussions with Transit, who has allowed a smoking area and wants to continue to have a designated smoking area on the North Block, which is cooperatively-owned county and Transit. So we've been having discussions and with them, but they feel strongly about keeping it. And so we likely will be coming back before you with an amendment to allow a designated smoking area. And I think the wording will be effectively on property cooperatively-owned between the county and another entity that would apply to the North Block, something to that effect. So I wanted to give you a heads up on that. That, that is, that is looming. But I-
Thank you. So Emily, also, it was out in the employee newsletter that we sent out from the Board Office.
It was, yes. Yeah, that was a great article that was sent out. And I think that, that helped boost the knowledge among our staff as well.
All right. So that was good. So I have a question for you, too, not on our ordinance, but I was at a neighborhood meeting, talking about the Kaiser big toy, by the way. And, and, and Warren Bednar's was there, who's a city councillor, and was reporting to the group about what was going on at the city. And I have to admit, I was reading through my notes. And so I only picked up a portion of it when he started talking about smoking. It sounds like they had some discussion at city council, and I couldn't tell if it was just about city parks, or whether it was a broader discussion- just about city parks, or whether it was a broader discussion about smoke-free workplace. So are you familiar with what they talked about recently?
I am familiar with it. They had passed an ordinance back in December that allowed for properties that are, or sorry, public entity properties that are smoke-free or tobacco-free. So their city ordinance allows those entities to include public rights of way into their policies, meaning that sidewalks and green spaces can be included in those properties' policies to help with enforcement. So what we were finding is that properties put these, or businesses, put a policy in place, but then staff were able to smoke right on the sidewalk. So it became a challenge for entities to really enforce that. That was really initiated by Willamette University and Salem Health, because they would like to implement a smoke-free corridor that goes in between those two properties, so that sidewalks and green spaces would be included. So there was just some, that ordinance was passed in December, and there have been discussions about whether the city will go smoke-free or tobacco-free. But because there were some new councillors that came aboard, I think that was tabled for a little while.
That's what it sounded like.
Yeah, and there's also been some discussions to look at a parks policy again. That was an effort that we worked with them on, I want to say in 2011 and '12, and didn't pass at the time, but that's still a consideration that they're looking at, because there was a lot of community need, I think, for a policy, or an opportunity for a policy, especially when there are events in the parks, like concerts in the parks and other family events.
Okay, great, thank you. So questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Latimer.
This would, or will be, an issue with the condominium association between the county and Transit, and we're going to be talking about it at our next condo board meeting. And we have representatives from the city are going to come to our board meeting, and we'll talk about how we would, should this city ordinance go into effect, how we would work with having the Transit smoking area on the North Block. So I'll report back what we find out.
Yeah, Warren Bednarz, as I mentioned, was there, and he said something about the fact that they were concerned about people just moving from one place to another place, and so they decided they weren't going to act on, but I didn't pick up the substance of the entire thing that he was talking about, so. Other comments?
Yeah, I do have some comments. Obviously, I voted against the original ordinance, haven't changed my mind, the basic theme being, I don't think it's right for government to try to force a legal free choice on anything. But then on this particular one, Bruce tried to address why a hundred wasn't adequate. I think it is. So if you just want to raise the fine, the ordinance has already made people miserable. This one will make them angry. I don't find any need for it, and I would suggest we leave it at $100. Maybe $250 is worth enforcing, but that's not my goal. So I won't be voting for it.
Okay.
So just clarification, so the ordinance, as I read it, increases the maximum fine to $250, but if somebody is cited, which we are saying they're not being cited yet, but if somebody is cited, they could still be fined at what amount?
Effective, effective April fourteenth, they would be fined, it would be up to, the fine, the citation would be issued, and the action would be heard by a justice of the peace in the justice court. So it would be up to the justice of the peace to determine the correct amount, or the appropriate amount, assuming a citation is issued. What is laid out here, if this order was adopted, that the justice of the peace could not impose any civil penalty more than $250. The practice is, as with a traffic ticket, is not to go to the maximum amount. From my understanding from the justice of the peace, the starting point is much lower, and I don't have any experience with, I don't recall us ever issuing a citation with regard to a smoking situation. But it would only be on repeated violations by the same individual where a justice of the peace would go to the maximum amount.
Another question, if I may, Madam Chair. So I think about three weeks ago, Bruce, I walked out the front here, and somebody was smoking marijuana right next to our front door, and, yeah, right, right next to our front door of our building. Obviously, people think it's legal now, or whatever. I did find a deputy and said something to him. I don't know what happened as I walked down to the Capitol, but would that, because this is a tobacco-smoking, could that person, forget the marijuana issue, could that person have been cited by the deputy for the smoke-free ordinance? The way we're going here with the maximum of $250 versus the marijuana ordinance?
If the individual was on county property but not on a sidewalk?
Was on the sidewalk but leaning up against the building right next to the front door, smoking marijuana?
As I recall, the line, the sidewalk starts a little bit outside of the buildings, is my understanding. But to be honest with you, we would have to look at where our property ends. From our work with the Courthouse Square remodel, if you will, I can't remember where the drawing show.
John may remember, he's made his microphone squeak.
Well, I think that line is, if it's next to the building, it's still illegal, because, particularly near a door, because the state law requires you to be ten feet away.
From a door.
From a door, or a window.
If he was right, that's, if he was right within ten feet, certainly, that would be a violation. Beyond that, it's a question of, is somebody on the sidewalk, or are they on the county property?
So also, let me, Bruce, clarify, because the ordinance takes effect April fourteenth, but the provisions of the ordinance don't take effect until July one. So in other words, we passed the ordinance, right, but it actually starts on July first, right?
The, no, the ordinance takes effect April fourteenth. The designated, the allowance for designated smoking areas continues until June thirtieth for all the other properties besides jail, juvenile, and public works. But clearly, the focus initially is all about education.
So what takes effect between April fourteenth and July one, then?
The ordinance does.
Well, what part of the ordinance? If we still have smoking areas until July one?
It is, we have clarity now, we will have clarity on April fourteenth, that if you're on the grass at the courthouse, on the grass, in front of the Health Department building, that is a violation. Whereas we had currently the languages.
So you have to be in a designated smoking area in the interim in order to be legal, quote unquote?
Correct.
All right. But then July one, those designated smoking areas go away, except in the three places that you mentioned? All right, that's clear, thank you. So there was that question, and then the other question was, so this ordinance actually is a new ordinance, and it replaces prior ordinances, right? So when you said that the existing $100, was that the one hundred, was that the amount that was established by board order for the prior ordinance that this replaced?
Correct. So that's why that is still going on. What is in the code right now, it's actually within the code that lays out that it's a $100 maximum.
Okay, for the ordinance that takes effect, that was in effect up until this one takes effect April fourteenth?
I think it started in 2000, and it, yep, it's in effect until April fourteenth, 2015, correct.
So if we didn't pass this order at all, would that prior, since that prior order is attached to an old ordinance, it would be null and void?
It wouldn't carry forward. Basically, you would have an ordinance, you would have, this ordinance would be in effect, but there would be no maximum civil penalty, no clarification of what the civil penalty is, or if there's a maximum civil penalty.
Right, and then Section seven, sub two, says violations of this ordinance shall be subject to a civil penalty in an amount to be established by the Board of Commissioners. So this is the establishment of that civil penalty. So then my question is, can you clarify again why you chose $250 over $100?
It was between the three things of looking at the Oregon Indoor Clean Air Act, which sets maximum fines of $250 or $500, looking at the Oregon statutes for violations, which we connect to frequently, not 100% of the time, but the lowest is, the lowest maximum civil penalty is $250 for Class D, and the other, those were the primary focuses.
Okay, so the reason was to correlate with Oregon statute and with the Oregon?
Clean Air Act, the lower level of the Oregon Clean Air Act, the lower, the lowest level of violations, the lowest level of the Oregon Indoor Clean Air Act. And again, it's a maximum, it's not a mandatory, or it's not a minimum, it's not a presumptive, it's just the maximum.
So the justice of the peace could opt to do a lower penalty?
Absolutely.
Now, is this one subject, it's a civil penalty, so is this one the same as the Mars and the Mart, and all of the, like, the state gets some, or whatever, through the justice court, or not? Is it different?
It's not, I'd have to, I'm trying to remember how that all ties in. That clearly applies to traffic citations, but this isn't tied, this isn't tied to Oregon statute, it's tied to our.
So we would just collect the entire fine, whatever that is? I'm just wondering whether the justice of the peace would be motivated to impose the entire fine because of the way that those divisions occur? That's kind of my underlying question.
I apologize, I can't, I can't recall off the top of my head how that.
So my guess is that none of this would go to the state, because it's a county ordinance.
I don't want to say.
Could be wrong. Would you find out and just email us and let us know?
Absolutely.
Madam Chair, may I make a suggestion here? One of our options is to, we need to approve something. It sounds like we're, we have nothing the way the new ordinance, unless we approve something. So may I make a suggestion that we entertain the option of approving the current maximum of $100, and then establishing, and then reviewing this and watching how it gets implemented over a period of time, and then coming back and seeing if we need to, you know, how many people are being cited, and find out from the court if there is abusers that are abusing it over and over again, and then have some sort of statute. So I can make a motion, if you would allow me to do that.
Sure. We'll have to make up for it next week.
What's that?
I said you'll make up for it next week.
So we would leave it at 100, as Commissioner Brentano suggested, it's currently 100, we will leave it at 100, adopt it in this new ordinance, review it later on, and have a report and see how the implementation goes, and whether the fines are making a difference or not. Because really, we're talking about an education period and those things. So, Madam Chair, I will move that, you helped me out here on changing this, that the one change to the ordinance would be from, I'd strike the $250 and put that at $100.
Okay, so I'll second your motion. So we have a motion and a second to approve an order setting the maximum civil penalty amount for violation of smoke-free and tobacco-free county property ordinance at $100. And so that would just, we could approve that now, they can just revise the order before we sign it.
Does that work? Yeah, if that's approved, I can make that change and have it to you for your signatures.
Great, all right. Any further discussion?
Just a comment, thank you very much, I was going to suggest that, but I'd still prefer not to vote for it. Thank you.
Okay, so any further discussion? Those in favor of the motion say aye? Aye. Those opposed?
No.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So that concludes our action items today under board session. As I mentioned earlier, there are no public hearings today. I'll read our Wednesday-to-Wednesday calendar. These are meetings where two or three commissioners will be present. We're just concluding our board session here in the Senator Hearing Room in Courthouse Square. It's Wednesday, April eighth. At noon today on April eighth is State of the County Town Hall meeting, presentation to the State and Sublimity Rotary. That will be at the Santee Am Golf Club, 8724 Golf Club Road, southeast in Almsville. At two o'clock this afternoon is a Mid-Willamette Jobs Council meeting at the, it says it inside, but it's actually at the Shemek at a Center for Business and Industry, 626 High Street, northeast, Suite 305 in Salem. Also today, Wednesday, at 3:30, is a meeting of the Economic Development Advisory Board, and that will be held in the Commissioners' Boardroom on the fifth floor here at Courthouse Square, 555 Court Street, northeast in Salem. Tomorrow morning, April ninth, at 7:30 a.m., is our monthly meeting with Kaiser officials. That will be held at Sherry's Restaurant, 4998 River Road North in Kaiser. At 9:30 tomorrow, April ninth, we will have a one-on-one department head, it's like a five-on-one department head elected official meeting, with Walt Beglar, our district attorney. That will be held in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor at Courthouse Square. Then Monday, April thirteenth, all day are the AOC Steering and Legislative Committee meetings and board meeting at the Local Government Center, 1201 Court Street, northeast in Salem. Tuesday, April fourteenth, at 7:30, is our monthly meeting with Staton and those area officials at the Covered Bridge Cafe, 510 North Third Avenue in Staton. On Tuesday, April fourteenth, at four o'clock, is a joint meeting of the Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council and the Marion County Reentry Council. That will be held in the Commissioners' Boardroom on the fifth floor here at Courthouse Square. And then a week from today, Wednesday, April fifteenth, it's tax day, will be our regular Wednesday board session here in the Senator Hearing Room at Courthouse Square. So, anything other than the big toy that we want to talk about?
Is that Kaiser?
[laughing].
Yeah, I just, we had a, I thought it was just a magnificent gathering, and Gates yesterday talking about possibilities up there. What comes from it, I don't know, but we certainly started the ball rolling, and I felt pretty good about it. And all those Barb Young, Tammy Getz that were involved, I thought did a great job.
The staff, staff really did a good job, and it really is an example of well-thought-out, I mean, from whatever it was two years ago, when the two of you were up at the canyon and heard that, and the way staff and you have continued to progress down that. I walked away thinking, okay, I was hoping that some city would have some, you know, funding source that they'd walk away getting excited, but I also understood that there was, there was many suggestions that went back and forth on how these things could be accomplished, and it's difficult to say, we could do this for you, and then leave somebody else out in that type of a forum. So I think the follow-up to that meeting is going to be the critical part.
Well, if I could interrupt there, and I'm sorry I didn't catch his name, but Mill City Mayor, he, his idea at the end was to ask us to come and kind of talk with a joint group of councillors, mayors of that whole area, and try to work those kind of things out. And I was impressed that at least that was a step of, seeing first what we could do collaboratively, that everybody seems to join, put something together.
Well, I saw Tammy coming up the elevator yesterday, and I said, I have an idea, and that is, let's convene them as soon as possible and have that discussion, rather than waiting for some council that COG has, you know, to meet, because that could be six months from now before that gets together. So let's get the key players from the four areas and find out from them whether or not a regional approach is something that they would entertain. And then if that, if they are interested in a regional approach, then there's steps that have to be taken in one direction. If they want to go it alone, then it goes in a different direction, but we kind of need to know that before we go to the next, to the next level. And I left there, I thought staff did a terrific job, I thought the turnout was wonderful. I thought that the stories from the different communities were compelling. I mean, you really felt the angst that they had about, I mean, you realized why that money that was promised in Opel Creek would have been such a boon to that area, and how difficult it is for them to find it on their own. I mean, that was, that really came out clearly. And I appreciated the folks that were there, but I found actually some discrepancies or conflicts in some of the things that I heard.
That we heard from DC.
That was troubling to me, and also, and I recognize people don't want to make promises that they can't keep, but it felt so non-committal. How many people stood up and said, well, just call me, or just come to my meeting? And, well, this is the meeting, you know what I'm saying? And so that was a little bit concerning to me in terms of how the response was from the people that were there. But hopefully, what we can do is narrow down what we will help them with, and then find out whether or not they want that help, so.
I 100% agree, it felt like they were holding back. When we heard from people in DC, you and I both came back pretty excited. It wasn't the same level of.
But if we could choose what that project is, and then go to them and say, now what But if we could choose what that project is, and then go to them, say, now what will you do?
Right.
And start filling that.
Yeah.
And I think that's the caution, if it's, if it's regional, you can bring all the cities together, if it's not, you got to be careful about having them all in there because now you have one city going, well, how come you can, how come they're getting it and we're not? So that's one thing. The other thing that happened this weekend, I wanted to share, I know I shared with Commissioner Brintano a little bit, was that Thursday night at Willamette Valley Vineyards, what a great turnout for the Marion County Extension Service District to support that. And there's another event at Zelensky Farms tomorrow, tomorrow night, in support of the Marion County, and I've been warned by my duck friends to call it the Marion County Extension.
Yeah, exactly, I heard that too. I saw that on the new literature.
Well, when we say OSU Extension Service District, some-
The duck people might be-
Why do I care what they think?
Some ducks, you know, they get offended.
Well, because they're half the voters. The other half are beavers, so.
So it is the Marion County Extension District, even though we may have orange hats and lanyards that say OS on them up here today. So that's going really well, and there's a new video out to support that, and I know you had some, some positive experiences.
We had a fabulous Saturday, I was so impressed. We had something like 11, I'm trying, I don't know if you count the two little ones that were with Ben, who works with New Media Northwest, but I think counting them, we had, not counting them, I think we had 11 people that showed up in the morning at my house, and we got flyers out, which, they're very nice flyers, by the way, and then went over to an adjacent neighborhood in the afternoon, I think we had eight people in the afternoon, and we had a box of 1,000, and one of the youth, they're 4-H youth mostly, that volunteered, saved one of them, or else we wouldn't even have had one left. We sent, we put 999 flyers out, and one of the adults said probably another 100 to 200 of the cards that we had from, you know, those cards that we've had for several months now, because they just ran out. So it was, it was amazing, and the response from people was very, very positive, too, which was good.
Which it will be, I think.
Yeah, people's, I mean, I talked to somebody, he goes, oh, my daughter participates in that. My dad was a dairy farmer and other guys, so it's just interesting.
So there was really good sponsorships there, in fact, Commissioner, you might have competed with me on one of the silent auction items. I bought 400 pounds of fertilizer for $60.
What?
From Wilco. I know, so do I.
There wasn't a white motorcycle there.
They had a little silent auction going on. There was, you know, great turnout from Wilco and all the different ag businesses that supported it, and basically, due to the sponsorships of them, Willamette Valley Vineyards, 100% of the proceeds, I think they raised about $7,000 towards it, so it was good.
Since we're talking fundraising, kind of a commercial, and you're heading to Staton Rotary, you may get presented with the opportunity, their big event, wine tasting, and kind of a social event in Staton is this weekend, you can get tickets there, and strawberry sale. So if you get asked, just bring your checkbook, everybody will be happy.
Oh, and speaking of Mill City.
Was I?
I was.
Okay.
With the white motorcycle.
All right, oh, fine. Yeah, you were, I could still be there, you know that.
So he bought a Harley, a white Harley, at, what auction was that? Was it Regis?
At the Oregon Garden.
It was the Oregon Garden Auction, and was it the first time you took it on the road?
On extended road.
Right, yeah. Went out to Mill City, where we did State of the County, parked it, and then we got done, and he couldn't figure out how to start it after that, right?
It had a security, it was like Morse code, but you had to time it. Well, I got no timing, you had to go up, up, and then wait a second, and then you could, and then it would go, but I couldn't get it. And so everybody just left. Janet says, can I give you a ride? No, I'll push it home if I have to.
Right.
Finally, I figured it out.
It was an hour or something.
I said goodbye.
You still have that?
No, I said goodbye.
No, he sold it, to that. So this was not the year that you, not, last year when you came, and we only had three people there, but it was another year when we had quite a few people there. So anyway, I was suggesting to Jolene that she ask you about, who was the name of the woman that was there yesterday?
Sandy.
The one that wanted me to sing, or that you talked to her, and you wanted me to sing that you reported, right?
Fine, whatever you think.
So we should ask her whether or not she could let people in the chamber know that we were coming for that town, that Mill City.
It was in the, it was in the Canyon Weekly this week, I saw that. And you know I won't be there, it's just the two of you, right?
Yeah, so we just want to make sure we're not doing a repeat of last year when we had two people there.
I wish I would have thought of that, might have been a good opportunity to just say out loud, well, we're going to be up here, and we can make that the subject of some-
Yeah.
General conversation, still could.
Well, we have the names and email addresses of people, but anyway, we'll just figure that out.
No, I could have done that instead of announcing the April 29th summit. Okay.
All right, well, do we have anything else? Then we will adjourn.